Good evening, everyone. It is 7:02. We're going to call our meeting to order tonight. If you have not signed in on our guest sheet in the back, please do so for records. Could I get a roll call, please?
Um, yes. Um, Mr. Patrick.
Here.
Ms. Colvin.
Here.
Mr. Jacobs.
Here. All present and accounted for. If you'd please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Could I get an approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, please? I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
I'll second that motion.
Perfect. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And any additions, removals, disclosures from our posted agenda?
No.
I have none. Hearing none. Uh, we have a guest this evening, uh, from the Little Miami Watershed Network, Chris Barnett. Welcome.
Actually, I have a guest.
Two guests. Uh, when you speak, uh, please speak into the microphone best you can, so nobody can hear in the back.
I can do that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
My name is Chris Barnett with the Little Miami Watershed Network. This is Hope Tapp. She is also one of our board members. Um, and we are here to talk with you today about a economic survey that was done on the Little Miami River. Um, you may not be familiar, and you have control over it?
Yep.
Okay, go right ahead. Um, you may not be familiar with our organization and what we are up to. Um, and I'm not going to read the whole slide, so if you're following along behind me, it's not that. Some of it will be, but not all of it. So, um, our organization, um, is about the preservation of the Little Miami and the protection of the Little Miami River. And we are a project-oriented organization, um, that typically works for things like, you can go ahead. Um, typically works with projects like river cleanups, uh, water studies, uh, tributary cleanups. And the Little Miami River is within an hour of over three million people. So the availability of the river for people to use the river, it's there. It's great. Um, we are a stewardship organization, and as they say, we're very project-oriented. Three years ago, uh, we took on a project of doing an economic survey, um, of the river. And the question is, why didn't we do it? Well, for us, the river is the place where we go to recreate. You know, we're canoeers, we're kayakers, we go for our leisure time. For a lot of folks, they want to know what's the value of this river and having it in their community, what's the value of having it in their own backyard. Um, they want a dollar value to it. And it's very difficult for us to give that answer because we didn't know. Um, Hope, along with another one of our board members, Bill Sheehan, um, worked with Brent Songen, who is a professor at Ohio State University, to put together this survey. The survey was a seven-month-long survey. And Dr. Songen had done some of these economic surveys throughout the state of Ohio. So this was not new. It wasn't an abnormal item for him to do. And what he wanted to know was, what kind of amount do you put on your leisure time? You know, what's your leisure time worth to you and where do you spend your leisure time? We surveyed the top forty-three miles of the Little Miami. So if you're familiar with the river at all, it's a hundred and fifteen miles long. It starts just outside of Springfield and goes all the way down to the Ohio River. We never touched the rate money at all. We only surveyed from Springfield to just south of Warkow, your own little canoe area called Madrasman. You may be familiar with that. Now, why did we not do the whole river? Well, that's pretty cumbersome to do a hundred and fifteen miles of survey. And hang on, you go back for it. Yep, back up just a second. We wanted to survey where our community was, where we do the work for the Little Miami Watershed Network, um, and to keep it manageable. A survey that is seven months long is a pretty big project all in itself. We had twenty-four volunteers who stayed volunteering for us for that seven-month time period. And if you've ever been involved with a survey, you know that's a long period of time to have volunteers involved in a survey. And when I say we did a survey, we did not go to a site and have a pen, piece of paper, and ask, you know, stop and ask you questions. What we did was we picked forty-five sites in that forty-three miles and chose, um, sort of put together a, um, paper that, and I just completely, I've been talking too much today.
Parking lots.
Yes, parking lots. There we go. The parking lots along the river and along the bike path itself. And we chose those two locations, um, simply because folks on the bike path actually have access to the river also. So we wanted to make sure that we stayed within that corridor. The form we left folks, um, basically gave a reason why we were doing this, um, what kind of things that we would ask on the questionnaire, and gave a QR code. So if you could, you know, if you're familiar with QR codes and using them, and it also gave the website, so folks could instantly answer the questionnaire. The survey itself was only seven questions long unless you were willing to answer more. And you answered seven real quick, easy questions. Where are you from, um, your age, the amount of people in your car, uh, how much money did you spend getting to the river? Did you purchase anything? Um, you know, how far did you travel? Those kinds of questions. And then if you were willing to do a longer survey, you could, but it stopped at that. Now you can go on. We found, um, through the survey, that there's eight hundred and thirty-six thousand trips being taken to the forty-five sites along the Little Miami River in the upper forty-three miles.
A year.
That's annually. Now, when we say trips, we aren't talking individual people, we're talking vehicles. So it could be one person in a car, it could be five people in a car. So that doesn't equate to peoples. That's just the amount of vehicles going into those sites along the river. In your community, go ahead, in your community, and I put Maine Township with Corwin, anyway, so I sort of lumped you all together, um, it was ninety-one thousand four hundred and sixty-one trips annually for the seven sites along the Little Miami River. Go ahead, but then I may have you back up. Yep, it does have the sites. To show you the sites in your community, Bowman Park. Bowman Park, we were very careful not to survey the soccer folks. We did not want to skew the survey one way or another, so if there were soccer games going on, we skipped that site that evening. Lots of scout things going on, lots of highway patrol guys going on in there. Um, that was, those were one of my sites, so I'm very familiar with what happens in that park. Um, the Clintfold River Access, which is the park right next door, and then the Clintfolds Parking Lot, which is the one around the corner. The Red Barn Parking Lot, and Red Barn has part of it, and ODMR has part of it, we surveyed the whole thing. We had an understanding with Red Barn that the area that they had marked off for their private business, we left alone. We did not leave any surveys there. We didn't want to disturb their customers. Heisey Park, Caesar's Creek State Nature Preserve, and then the Caesar's Creek River Access. Those are the seven sites within your community. Red Barn Parking Lot, and I'll, that's how I refer to it as, um, has the highest visitation of any site within our forty-three miles. And that visitation was used predominantly for biking.
It's always full.
Always full, yeah. And the surveys, when we did the surveys, um, our days and times were computer-generated. So between Monday and Friday, we were there twice, and over the weekend, we were there once. And we could be there morning, lunchtime, or evening. And the computer generated a calendar for us as to what days to go and what times to go. And that way, it kept it all random. We weren't hitting the same people over and over and over again. Particularly sites like Red Barn, they have a lot of very similar folks, um, using that site. Having it computer-generated, having it, um, change each week kept us fresh and kept us finding new folks. The total recreational impact value was fourteen point nine million dollars per year. So in those forty-three mile, fourteen point nine million dollars is generated. Now, that is, that dollar figure is coming from two different sources, one of which is your direct spending. So people that are coming, um, to get an ice cream cone, they're buying date, they've bought a canoe, um, those kinds of expenses. So if you took one-third of that fourteen point nine out, that is direct spending. The rest of that is coming from consumer surplus. And if you're, if you're in the numbers-driven business, you'll understand what consumer surplus is. I had to have it explained to you. Consumer surplus is the dollar amount that you put on your leisure time. So if you were given a choice, would you want to go to the river or go canoeing? Or would you want to go to Lowe's and buy things for, you know, to repair your house? What's it worth to you? What kind of, of, um, value do you put on your mental health and well-being, your quality of life, your free time? And that's where that comes from. There is a company in our, one of our cohorts that sometimes comes with us to do these toxic health, a little billion-dollar company. I'm sorry, you said we're billion, it doesn't, it creates a little for me. There's a company called Qualtrics that has created a matrix to figure what value we have in our free time, in our leisure time. And Qualtrics, Dr. Songen works and uses this Qualtrics matrix to come up with these dollar figures. For your community, you can go ahead to the next one, um, it equates out to one million five hundred and seventy-two thousand three hundred and thirty-five million a year. That's a lot of folks enjoying your community and spending, you know, their leisure time in your community, along with if you figure a third of that's their dollar that's being spent, either getting to your community or in your community. Um, I've broken, um, the whole dollar amount down, um, by community, by site. So you can take a look at where, kind of where you fall in the middle of it all. For Warren County, you have the bulk of it. You have the bulk of the sites, but you also have the bulk of the dollar amount and the visitation. Um, you know, Clark County only had one site that we use, so it's relatively small. And you can go on to the next one for me. Green County has the majority of it, but of course, Green County was the majority of our survey sites. You know, when you're doing the forty-three miles, the majority of it falls in Green County. But if you look at it, your dollar amount is, is right up there with, you know, the Colton area, the Beaver Creek, you know, spring, our Zena area. You're not real far behind either one of those two communities. So there's a lot of, a lot of money coming into your community because of, because of the river. And because of, that's how folks must spend their leisure time. If you look at the river as a whole and go mile by mile, the recreation amount spent comes out to about three hundred and forty-six thousand five hundred per river mile per year. So as you drive home, you drive one mile, think about the fact that if that was the river, it's generating over three hundred and forty-six thousand, um, hundred thousand dollars. So why is this important and why did we come talk to you? Well, we want everybody to know who's coming into their communities and what kind is, what is being spent. We feel that the dollar amount is, and the amount of folks met at trips is outstanding. It shocked all of us. I think if I would have asked anybody in this room, they would have never said that that forty-three miles was worth fourteen point nine million. It wasn't, in my view, and I love the river. But we also found that you need to understand the folks aren't coming into your community because of this waterway. So as you're, you're looking at things, as you're making choices, as you're making decisions about your community, you know, we noticed the zemimaps, it was one of the first things we saw when we wandered in, you know, as you're making new, new decisions, you need to remember this asset that you have and the fact that you've got a lot of folks coming in to enjoy this asset. You can go on for it. You know, you've got a lot of younger folks coming in. Your average age, um, was about thirty-four, um, which is, is quite a young group of folks that are using the river in your community. You know, to retain those younger folks, to attract people and have them build the connection in the environment, the river seems to be doing that for you all. And now more than ever, you know, everything is being threatened, you know, every, everybody is looking for the next biggest, best, greatest. Uh, we need to stop and think about, you know, before we take that leap, you know, what's the next best thing, what all is out there, and what's all, you know, already working for us? Thank you. Go ahead. And we're just hoping that you, you know, stand with us and protect that river and recognize the amount, the dollar amount that is coming into your community. The packet that I gave you, um, has all the similar information. It has the full report, um, the full study. If you're a numbers person, that's going to work real well for you. If you're like me and not, um, there are some other, you know, one-page sheets and small, um, inserts in there that'll give you, you know, the demographic information. So, things that I can answer for you, questions I can answer?
Um, I do. So, it's not called Little Miami Inc. anymore? I can't remember.
Little Miami Conservancy.
Okay, how do you guys relate with them?
We're, it's a, it's a, a partnership. They typically work on the lower half of the river. They're working from Oregonia South predominantly. They do a little bit up here, but not a whole lot. We deal more with the northern part, and they typically deal more with the southern end of the river.
So they're, they don't, you guys don't own any property?
We do not.
Because they own property?
Correct, yes. They own property, um, all the way up to the river. And that's a decision that they have made to do that. We have decided that that's not what we want to be in the middle of. We like to encourage folks to protect their land, but land ownership, yeah, not yet.
They asked me, what other projects you guys have in mind? And what have you guys accomplished project-wise?
Um, our biggest project is our river cleanup. And our river cleanup's been going on for, I think, eight years now. Um, and it typically is the first weekend in June. Um, we have a number of sites that we put in along the river. It's open to the public. We get about three hundred and fifty, four hundred folks that come out. Um, and they are collecting, you know, anything they find along the way. We've taken, um, a thousand and one tires out of the river to this point.
Just in Grand County.
Just in Grand County, yeah. Um, that doesn't count what we've gotten down here and then the northern end. We do tributary cleanups, so if you've got a group, it doesn't have to be kids, it can be anybody. Um, we do tributary cleanups. We organize those. Of course, the tributaries are as important as the main stem of the river is, you know, trying to keep those cleaned up. We do Make a Difference Day, where businesses or organizations, doesn't have to be a business, can come out. And that's usually done in October, the first or second weekend in October. We let the group pick their day so that it works into their, their type schedule. Pfizer, the company Pfizer has worked with us in the past. They have a group of employees that actually are being, it's part of their pay, their work day, being paid to come out. They come out and commute down the river and pull tires out of the river. October's great for that because the water level's pretty low, so it's easier to find some of that bigger stuff that's buried. Um, we've done tree plantings, um, we do a lot of educational speaking type things, so.
You can join us November the twenty-fifth. We can have a walk from Corwin to Oregonia. And we'll do a lot of history on that bike, on that part of the bike trail. We'll be walking, not biking.
Oh, thanks.
And it'll be fun. It's family, very family-oriented. We hope families will come out and, um, work off some of their Thanksgiving dinner.
Yeah. You'll see it listed as C2O4H2O, so it's Corwin to Oregonia for water.
Okay.
So if you see that listed, that's what that means.
Is it on your Facebook page, your website or something, so we can share it?
We're working on the flyer right now.
Okay.
So when it gets done, I'm sure you'll get it.
Okay, great, great. Thanks.
And we also had, in Green County, and we wanted to do it in Wayne, in Warren County, but didn't get enough people. And then we have a leadership float where we invite elected officials to join us to, to get a view of what the land looks like from the river perspective.
I signed up for that.
I know you did. I remember, I remember knocking, and I said, oh, geez, what if our people had signed up? So hopefully next year.
I hope so.
After we have talked to a lot of the government agencies, there'll be more people that are interested.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Because it's really different to see the river, to see the land from the river's perspective and see the river from the land's perspective.
I don't have any questions, but Chris and Hope, our, our river is such a valued natural resource for us here in Wayne Township. I mean, it's, it's very, very special to us. And, um, we thank the work that you continue to do and anything we can do to help and continue to put the word out, we're happy to do so.
Share, share the information and the, the kind of, the kind of, the fact that there are.
Real dollars.
Almost a hundred thousand people coming to your community through the river. It's a lot of people.
So, we, we hope that you will join with us to help protect the banks and to help protect it. There's this sheet in your folder that talks about the biggest threats to the river.
Okay.
And as I was driving over the ridge out here tonight, I looked over and saw the river and saw that it was basically pools divided by.
Oaks.
Divided by sandbars. And I'm thinking, oh, that is really an issue that we really have is weather continues to get warmer and that we really need to protect the banks, um, so we have less, um, sediment going into them and, um, and protect the floodplains so that when we do get those rain bombs, the water has a place to go instead of somebody's basement.
Right.
We appreciate your help.
Thank you very much, ladies.
Thank you.
And you can feel free to stick around, or if you want to dip out, we won't be offended, so, thank you.
We'll probably dip out.
Yeah.
Okay, citizens' comments.
Hold on just a second. Hey, all that works, eighty-five, seventy-five, Old Stage Road. Okay, I'd like to remind you that I'm only here due to the actions of others. I'm here to discuss the future home of Shaner Farms LLC, Hog and Chicken Farm sign on Old Stage Road. I'd like to start by thanking the trustees for listening to my concerns two weeks ago. Thank you. However, there's a big difference between listening and hearing the message being said. I gave you clues in our conversation to help you see the sign for what it truly represents. Once again, I have not seen any action to indicate that this matter is being taken seriously. Let me show you how easy it is to discern the nature of this sign. Fasten your seatbelts, we're going to take a ride down Old Stage Road. We're heading north on Old Stage Road from the intersection of Bellbrook Road. We see a few homes. Note that the properties on the left side of the road are actually subdivided from the old Shaner Farm. And one of those properties actually sold in the last year. As we continue north on Old Stage, take note of the half-mile road frontage that the Shaner Farms has on the right side of the road. More houses go by on the left. What's our speed? Forty-five mile an hour? Look, there's real estate signs on the left. "Acreage for sale." "A house for sale." Wait, what was that white blur on the right side? I couldn't read it. It went by too fast. Quick, there's a driveway on the left. Let's turn around and see what we missed. Mind you, this happens on a daily basis. We turn around, and now we're heading south on Old Stage Road. I know that sign was here somewhere. Stop! There it is on our left, only visible when you get the last hundred feet from the sign. Now we have a safety concern, for we have stopped traffic in the middle of the road where there's a limited sight distance and no one is expecting traffic to be stopped. Let's pull in a driveway on the right so we can get a better look. "Houses for sale." They won't mind, I won't mind. We pull into the driveway and get out to have a better look. The sign is placed directly across the street from the properties for sale. The sign says there's going to be a Hog and Chicken Farm, the two most offensive smelling operations you could have. Furthermore, the sock, the farm site sits uphill from a municipal water supply wellfield and a mere six hundred feet from the wellfield protection zone. That's a huge amount of risk to mitigate. No investor in their right mind would assume that amount of risk. Now we start to see the true nature of the sign. It's placed at the very end of the property, the farm property, not anywhere near the rest of the half-mile of road frontage or the main area of the hundred and fifty-acre farm. The sign is parallel to the road, making it almost impossible to read when driving. But it's all too clear once you stop. The sign is meant for those looking at the properties for sale. I immediately complained about the sign as it didn't take long to discern the true nature of the sign. It was installed only four days after my property was listed for sale. I highly doubt this was by mere coincidence. I tried using the zoning code as a way for the sign to be removed without the township having to tape signs or maintain and be able to maintain a neutral stance. I gave you an out, actually multiple ways out. The first complaint was regarding the lack of a permit and code enforcement. The sign was actually moved to a new location once the initial complaint was lodged. The placement was still directed towards my property. I filed complaints about the construction materials used and the design of the sign. Again, more opportunities not to claim ownership of the decision. The zoning inspector denied all points of complaint referencing material used in the sign. The inspector stated that it was their determination that the sign components contributed to the rustic design of the sign. In my opinion, cheap, big-box store lumber, buy-by-the-pound fasteners found at your local TSC, and a vinyl banner do not constitute rustic. The codes are in place to keep cheap, unappealing signs from cluttering up our neighborhoods. I maintain that this sign is placed only as a tool to inhibit the sale of my property and to harass my properties, my family, and my neighborhood. and to harass my properties, my family and my neighborhood. The decisions of the zoning inspector and the lack of action by the trustees, you are now complicit in that harassment. Remove the offensive subject. Thank you.
Other citizens comments this evening? Hearing none. Fire department report, good evening, Mr. Camery.
Good evening, Board. Uh, I believe that I am going to stand back with my report as submitted with one addition. I did check on tractor that's supposed to be here the day after tomorrow. Been pushed off another month. It's frozen, it's waiting on component parts in Mexico, so at least another month. So, other than that, you know what I know. And I don't, I don't have anything else, so unless you guys have anything you need to throw my way, uh, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Camery.
You're welcome.
Thank you for taking care of trees that come down the road, so.
Oh, no problem, you're welcome. Between Paul and I, we.
We belong.
We get along.
We leave a mess for head to tail.
All right, very no further questions for Mr. Camery. We'll move on to the fire department report. Good evening, Chief Shear.
Good evening, uh, report's pretty good, got two members there in the new business. Give you items. All, all of them paid for except for two, uh, they've already started contacts about picking those up. And the only other thing is, uh, our light pack that we bought, their extended service contract come in today, and so I'll be getting that over and, so we can get those, because the state contract covers all hundreds of payments on batteries and everything. About fifteen hundred a year per unit. And the batteries are about a thousand bucks a piece, so usually end up going through a couple of batteries every year, so. So it, it's a wash, pretty much, batteries and everything, so. And that's really all I've got.
Got some new members, looks like, for new business?
Yep.
Any other questions for Chief Shear? No? Hearing none. We'll move on to the zoning department report. Good evening, Ms. Looney.
Oh, good evening. So basically I stand online as well, and I just wanted to point out that Friday morning I did get the, um, the magazine out to the printer. Um, Stacy Castle was, um, going to be without internet after Friday, so we made it and it should be out this coming week.
Great.
And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. And moving on to the administrative report, Mr. Edwards.
Uh, good evening, Board. Um, both parking lots, as you know, as when you came in tonight, have been seal coded. I know Mr. Lane wasn't totally happy with our parking lot here, but I think it looks fine for what it is, and I hope they're not to be worried about it. It was just a interim thing, you know, went back and looked, and I think it was two thousand and eleven was the last time we actually sealed it.
Really?
Yeah, it was quite a long time, that's because of Christ.
Well, I mean, I knew it'd been a while, but I didn't think that long. Wow, okay.
And I'm also sure we didn't do the fire department one time without doing this.
Without doing that.
Right.
We talked about maybe paving this next time and then it held up and then.
Right.
And then we did the fire department fourteen, and this one was eleven, I believe. So, so it, it looks good for what it is, and so I'm, I'm, I'm happy with it. Uh, mail server, Steve Cox, our IT guy, is recommending that we budget for migrating our mail server over to Microsoft. They're currently charging twelve fifty per person. Uh, but with that comes, uh, exchange online protection and currently paying four twenty a year for that right now. It also comes with office suite sixty-five, and we're paying about three hundred dollars a year for three of them right now. The biggest thing is that they'll take over all the maintenance on the server, and that's the cost that, as Steve puts it, is priceless for him.
There are just so many, so many updates and hacks and stuff like that coming. I mean, every day there's something new coming out.
You know, even if you, uh, you know, I work for a couple hundred million dollar company and, and we still let Microsoft manage a lot of that stuff just because it's.
They're on top of it.
You just can't stay on it, I mean, you just.
Is that twelve fifty per person per year?
Okay, what I learned that point is, uh.
Per.
Yeah, per person. Uh, so on the Microsoft, it'll just be, I, I sent the email in your packet, so it'll just be Stacy's computer, my computer, uh.
Three or four to fire out, and.
And then everybody else's email then will be moved over to, uh, wtfd.org, uh, because it's, it'll be cheaper with, uh, with that.
All of ours too, I believe?
Yeah, and yours, so, uh, anybody that's got a PC that's being used here in the office will have covered with Microsoft three sixty.
Don't want to figure any addresses.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, that's what I was questioning, okay.
Any answer?
Yes, thank you.
Um, Safety Council, uh, last week we had, uh, back entries. It was a pretty good presentation, but the thing that I put in the packet today was the fact that next month, that'd be the third Friday of the month, they're opening up Safety Council for us to bring in additional employees or guests from the outside, because they think they paid for a pretty high dollar, uh, national speaker, this Chad Dunlap, and he'll be talking on suicide prevention training in the workplace. Uh, very, I guess, renowned speaker and so forth, and so they will make sure they get good bang for the buck, so that anybody that might be, want to be part of that or hear his presentations, so that you, especially if you're supervisor, so that you can kind of watch your people or whatever and know when they're becoming fatigued or, uh, under duress or whatever, and I think it might be helpful. Let me know if we can travel, and it starts at eight o'clock and we're out by nine.
Where are they, where are they doing it now?
YMCA.
At countryside?
Countryside, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, Hazy Park Police School, October first, uh, Warren County Broadband, uh. I just checked with them, they've, they've received all of their RFPs. Uh, they should, right as of now, been through those and they had a grading system, are they going to rate those? And so, but then either next week or the week after that, they should be coming out with who they're going to award it to and, and what's going to be done. Uh, so they're moving right along with this, and so hopefully we'll have some updates with that.
Do you believe that us lonely people up here in the northern part of the county are going to get any attention?
I'm going to believe that Bridgewater has already contacted, because the way they're talking, there's been some smaller places in the county that have, you know, and I think they're referring to, you know, like Bridgewater. So I think they're going to get part of the contract to service some areas that are being serviced.
Very good. Very good.
Um, that's really all I have right now.
Do you want to mention last night?
Um, yeah, Diane and I were at the votes council meeting last night. Uh, I did do a pass out and explain the fire leveling. Got quite a few or several comments back on it, or questions. Think we've fairly well answered, uh, their concerns. And as it turned out later on in their meeting, you know, they're having the same trouble with the police side of it, because anybody goes to the police academy is automatically got a job, because there's so many vacancies in the police, so, you know, with them having reserves, they're fighting the same type of, uh, situation. There are no reserves out there, unless it's just somebody that just wants to do it all the time, uh, so. I don't know, Diane, you think about Paul?
It went great, and, um, they also had a presentation, they're a Purple Heart Village now, and they had a, um, they had five or six, six.
Six.
Service members come in there, all in their purple jackets, they did a, um, they did a ceremony and it was, it was beautiful. It was really nice to see.
Very good. Any other questions for Mr. Edwards? Hearing none. Thank you, sir, for all you do.
Do they post their agenda anywhere unless you're on their email list or something?
Uh, yeah, just on their email list.
Could it have been nice to note that they was having this award thing last night, would have been nice for, you know, to put that out more to know about then rather than after the fact.
Right.
They had talked about they were scheduled to have this like a year or so ago when they put up that Purple Heart parking license or whatever. Uh, because of COVID, then the Purple Heart recipients, people that remember that, they're, they're old like me, so. Actually, they'll probably.
There was one younger guy.
It was.
Most of them were.
Yeah, that's true, but anyhow, so they, usually they do put it out. Their agenda was not out before the meeting this time for some reason, I don't know what, what happened. But they, they had a good turnout, although I think there may have only been one willing resident there, and the rest were township residents.
Yeah.
But they were still, I think the people that did the program were happy to see that there were quite a few people.
The nice sign out front could have been a nice, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I do have, I have a question for you, Chief Shear. Um, the parking lot down at the old station, I drove by that to see, you put tape out to try to prevent people from driving through there because of the, because they were knocking over the stuff in the rear, you said, right?
We put the tape across there when they were getting ready to seal code.
Oh, that was for seal coding?
That was to keep people off of the way we're going to seal code and drive it.
Okay. I thought it was to prevent people from driving all the way through and.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll leave it up.
I know.
You're doing, you're lucky if you do get them to not drive through the tape for that.
Yeah, appreciate it. Okay, I thought it was for them, what you had talked about, are you thinking?
We did cones and tape down there and up here the day ahead of time or whatever, that evening before the.
Okay.
Of course, here it was probably only Gus and Stacy that had walked out, so.
Those were your cones?
Yes, they was our cones, yeah.
Did I have Derek take them back?
Yeah, he called us and put them back. Did you ever recover your cone?
Yes. From the village Corwin, yeah. Yeah, the gentleman that was here that evening got with me the very next morning, bright and early, and got all the, I got my tape back and they were right on top of the cones in there, so we're all good.
Coats are rather expensive, bro.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, any old business this evening? Hearing none. New business, questions or concerns of the bills?
I have none.
I have none.
Also none. Legislation, Resolution twenty-two dash sixty-two, approve the acceptance and hiring of William T. Ziegert to the Wayne Township Fire Department as part-time volunteer firefighter, firefighter paramedic, excuse me.
The, he's passed everything except his agility, him, his son, and his son's whole football team has COVID.
Oh.
So he has not been able to complete that, so we can either, you know, pass it, weigh it on his agility, or we can put it on till next week.
Um, I, I would say I am good to pass him pending his agility test.
Okay, and whenever he does that, uh, he's retired just recently, last couple of weeks from the city of Morangue.
Okay.
He's a lieutenant there, spent thirty years at Morangue. He rode up into the battalion chief's position, lives right up in Clear Creek Township off of forty-eighth, rather close. He bought land on Harland or Brooks Carroll Road. Will he go and house beside that, uh?
What's that farm?
The farm that's over there to sell beef and all that.
Yeah.
Back in the time, he's going to build a house there.
Stagels or?
Oak Creek or?
Oh.
Yeah, I don't know why, I can't think right now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But he, he's going to build a house over there eventually. Walnut Creek or something like that.
Walnut Creek.
Walnut Creek Farms, yeah. And, uh, real good guy, a lot of experience, instructor, paramedic, fire two, fire safety inspector, public safety inspector, firefight instructor, scene director, and he's also a police officer. All kind of res- rescue tech, fire officer one, two, three, four, the OFE class in Ohio Fire Academy, rescue techs, I think, all kind of certifications. Carroll Creek. Carroll Creek Farms, yeah, that's it.
Yes, yeah.
He bought the lot right beside that.
Okay.
Okay, um, sounds like a great guy. Um, very no further discussion, I make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-two dash sixty-two. I will second.
Mr. Jacobs?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Patrick?
Aye.
Resolution's passed on September twenty.
And Resolution twenty-two twenty-two sixty-three, approve the acceptance and hiring of Joshua R. Harder to the Wayne Township Fire Department as a volunteer firefighter.
He's a resident of Sierra Way, eighty-one-on-one Sierra Way in Waynesville. He, uh, currently works for Crane One, he's a repair tech and welder for them, which is a crane company that does overhead crane work. Uh, he's currently in, uh, Warren County Career Center. He's in the Fire One class, he goes after he completes it, he goes to Fire Two, and then he gets his EMT. He really says he don't have nothing to do in his spare time and, uh, he loves the welding and he does a lot of stuff for them, his MSDS does for Crane One, and wants to get into the fire service.
Look, it's not looking like a welder.
Yeah. So he's, he's got all these welding certifications that you've got to have with cranes and stuff like that, plus electrical, because I guess a big part of overhead cranes is electrical, so. Don't you?
Sounds like another gift.
End of doubt.
Yeah.
Wonderful. Passed everybody.
I make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-two twenty-two sixty-three.
I will second that one.
You go ahead.
All right. Mr. Patrick?
Yay.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yay.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Okay. Passed, any other, uh, new business? Any correspondence this evening?
The only correspondence I had was, uh, there's a. It was a cemetery restoration class that they come on every year. And the date on this year's is October the fourteenth. It's presented by Warren County Geological Society. And they want you to go spend the day and learn how to restore, uh, give some unique history on the different, uh.
Men's.
Different types of stones and what years they were produced and so forth, and, uh, it's, we had one out here at, uh.
Newburg.
Newburg, uh, finders, so they carried, carried three, four, five, seven, eight.
Before my time.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's been, it's been a good while.
When you say a few years, just a few back.
Yeah, yeah.
It's Friday, October fourteenth, usually on May.
Sir? Elected officials comments?
Go ahead. My question today is, uh, over this past weekend, I'm part of the Wayne Three Basketball Association, and we had probably about a hundred and seventy kids try out for the basketball. Wow, um, yes, it's amazing, that's what I said too, is it's pretty amazing that, um, we have a lot of youth sports involvement and stuff like that too. And then also I attended the, um, Warren County Prosecutor's Class last night, um, talking about internal theft and stuff like that, talking about boards and programs and talking about audits having, you know, different policies and stuff in place and stuff like that. It was really good to have that and go there and then see everybody, all the different groups that were there, because all the youth programs that were in Wayne did attend this meeting last night, so it was good to see that, so.
I went to that years ago when Dave Forechels first started that.
Oh, yeah.
And that's the, when he first took office, because it was at that time a lot of, uh, youth organizations that was dealing with some fraud and stuff like that, and he started that class, it's really good, yeah, so.
And he went through, uh, those examples of the ones he had in Warren County.
Yeah.
Um, there has been a few. There has been a few, and large ones too, these aren't small sums, they're pretty large. And just tells you some of the basics that you need to look at, what you need to do, um, speak up, ask the questions, there should be more involvement amongst the board. Even if board members don't want to do the financial, we're all still responsible in some way, right? All of us up here, all of us out there, it's, it's our community, our involvement, you know, we can help out what we can. And I know a lot of them are volunteer organizations, so it's, it's hard to find volunteers as it is.
I think since he started that class, I think we've seen a downfall of that in Warren County.
Oh, yeah.
And I don't know if it's people doing better job, keeping track of it, or people getting smarter out of embezzling or something like that.
Yeah.
It was, it was really, it was a good class.
It's a very good class of where you went down. We'll, we'll find one. It's a very good class of where you went down, full, full point, full point, and talk and explain and then having your redundancies in with the two and having other people have ownership as well to help out with the minimize the, the, uh, mileage.
Molly Shear, that's that one we go to, that one. Cause we go to WCFD.
Yeah.
That's good.
God rest his soul.
I would just say that, um, as a trustee, I have to support your right, Mr. Edwards, to split and sell your land, that is, that is your right. But I also have to support the right of the property owner across from you to place a sign, to change their farming operation if they want to, or to decide not to change their farming operation if they want to, so it's, we have to look at each thing individually and support that property owner's right to do what they, and if it is a sign that does, that is just trying to do what you think it's trying to do, then we can't, we have, we can't read their intention and we can't say what they, what they can place on a sign or what they can, while it's not obscene and that is not obscene, so it's, I just.
You may want to address the video when it comes out and watch a couple of times over and listen to what was said.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, I'd like to thank anybody watching, uh, on YouTube this evening, thank you for watching and for, uh, keeping in touch with your government, what's going on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you share it off?
No, uh, no need for work session, uh, no need for executive session, uh, at seven fifty-four.
I got a couple of bits here.
Oh, wait, okay.
Uh, just a reminder, it's Warren County Township Association meeting, it's this Thursday, the twenty-second, at six o'clock at Union Township, if any trustees would like to attend. I think I will be at the sauerkraut meeting. Uh, tomorrow night, Wednesday, the twenty-first, I know you got a voting.
Yes, I do, yeah.
The Saurekla Society is having a meeting, Josh is probably where this is six or anything.
Yeah.
It's gonna be about the history, I guess, of the old mill street, so it would sound like a very interesting topic. Again, Heisey Park Fall Festival that we're kind of somewhat invested with, uh, parks, Warren County Park history is from eleven to five on October first. And then the week after that, sauerkraut festival, we're still in need of a few street ambassadors and also people sign up for booth help for chamber commerce. So anybody out there that would like to help?
I'm gonna try to get a moment, Kurt, and see if I try to take Friday off and just start on Friday morning, help.
Could you contact, um, Chris Barnett about that pool meeting because since it was along the Little Miami River, they may be interested in seeing the history of that, I don't know. Might be interesting.
Uh, sure, even.
All right.
Okay, very no further business, I make a motion to adjourn at seven fifty-five. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.